Mr. Yule?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Present.
Ms. uh Mrs. Glansberg? Is she coming?
She just she just used this this meeting.
Oh, she's okay. Mr. Del Sandro?
Here.
Mr. Calder?
Here.
Mr. Signor?
Here.
Chairman Denny?
Here. Need a motion to approve the summary so the summary is last yeah. Some of the minutes from last meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Collins?
Jack, before you get started, somebody's got to mute. They're watching TV and it's uh it's bleeding into the meeting.
Not me.
Not me.
Uh who H Fitz, I think is the person there. You know, it's me. They're muted now. Somebody was watching TV, so.
Alright.
I think we're all set now. I just couldn't hear you.
Okay, we had a motion to accept the summary of the minutes by Mr. Yule. We needed a second by Wayne, Mr. Calder. Down the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. Caucus. The caucus agenda items tonight are the first number one. Carol Carol Flowers. Two eleven Curry Road. The applicant requests a season sale permit to sell produce and homemade goods June first, twenty twenty one, September thirtieth, twenty twenty one, in a ten by eighteen foot shed located in the front yard. Has the picture on the hand drawn plan submitted by March seventeenth. Uh has anybody seen that? Hand drawn? Carol is here to present the proposal. Is she online? Is uh Carol Flowers, are you online?
She's she's here, Jack. She might need to unmute um star star six to unmute. I see her name here, though.
Oh, well, she's not on on the. I see your name. Well, was anybody saw the standard saw the drawings of the stand?
Yeah.
Yeah, the drawing was a little hard to figure out, but I overall, I got the concept.
Okay. Uh, anybody else got any views as what what she's being done or is being done? No?
No.
I just got a quick question, Jack.
Sure.
It talks about her having to remove the shed after uh one hundred and twenty days. Is that correct?
Uh, I don't have it up front of me. I would say yes.
That's a good size, good size shed she's got there.
Well, I think just to just to clarify, what she's seeking is a seasonal sales permit. Um, it would be at least my interpretation that the seasonal sales would have to end. Um, you know, at the at the end date of that permit. And I'm so sure that the shed itself has to be removed. Uh, Peter, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so if you're looking the agenda under the uh the there's a draft um waiver there. Uh, the the approval for seasonal sales is typically a hundred and twenty days. Um, from the date of approval. Uh, and then we had put a condition down that the accessory structure would be removed uh from the site. Um, I still see it looks like Carol is she is on the the meeting, so I just not sure if she's having trouble um unmuting herself. But probably would help to have her involved in the conversation if we can get her to.
Peter, I did see that in the what that was my only question. That's a big shed. I mean, I mean, we're gonna she's gonna obviously have it placed there after it's built. And then it's ten by eighteen. That's that's not easy to move around.
We don't know how it was built and maybe on skids, maybe designed so they can move it, you know, Wayne? If we could talk to her, we know more about it.
I don't know. That was my only question.
Peter, to to unmute on the phone at star six, you said?
That's correct. Yes. So if you should Carol, if you can hear us, if you hit star six on your phone, you should be able to unmute yourself.
It looks like she might be logged on from a computer and doesn't have an audio option per perhaps. I don't see any like phone or microphone option next to her name.
Yeah.
Call in.
Are we waiting for her or should we make a decision?
Here's what we can do. If you want, I can mute myself. I'll give her a call. The the number is in the packet. I'll give her a call and tell her to call in. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, so you guys can go ahead on the with the meeting. Just table this for the moment.
Alright.
Um, and then um I'll uh get back on after I've spoken with her.
Okay, well, what we can do is go to the next thing on the agenda. It's a uh Michael Valetta. Thirty one twenty five thirty thirty three Curry Road, Carmen Road, excuse me. The applicant requests a waiver of site plan review to install three E V S charging stations with six foot with six plugs on one point oh acres parcel containing three tenant spaces. I guess that's where the Valetta, that's where the Town TV is it? Am I right about that on Carmen Road?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Oh, you're online?
Yeah, actually Wayne Fitzgerald representing Town TV, yes.
Okay, uh. Let me poll the board to see if they have any questions for you, but I I don't I don't see a problem with it, but okay, uh, Mr. Yule? Any questions for the?
I don't see a problem with it. I just I don't see a need for it out there. It's not like there's you know, a big parking lot around it. I I know where Mickey's business is out there. I've done business with him. I just wonder why they're choosing to put six stations there. I've seen him at supermarkets where they have a lot more traffic volume, but there, I don't know.
Well, actually, Mickey has a recently got a completely electric vehicle himself that he drives. And he's looking towards the future where he might be buying more electrical vehicles as.
Now it makes sense. That would have been nice to put in the application. Okay, no, I don't have any problems, but I just was wondering, you know, how people are gonna use it and then you know, where do you go from there? So no, it makes sense now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, this is Dan Thurl with Habit Energy. I just wanted to interject there. Um, the so next third uh the state agency that approved it uh is looking at it from a perspective of one, the growth that's coming. Um, you know, we've seen like a like basically a three and a half times just over in the last year. Um, like Glenn's Falls, we did ten of them up there. And in the last year, they have, you know, over three times the usage. Um, so so they're expecting a, you know, a higher uh increase there, but also um its location, um, you know, near the uh the highway there. So um these stations will be available on a GPS location, like on your Google Maps. You can go in and search for local EV charger stations. And so their hope is that people will be able to jump off, you know, grab a slice of pizza, um, do a little shopping and then charge your vehicle. So they're really looking for locations like that, um, you know, in sort of high traffic areas. So I think that was one of the reasons that they pushed that forward.
Okay, uh, let me see the polls poll board. If anybody else had any questions, uh, Mr. Del Sandro?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Collins?
No, I'm good. That was the same question, but it's answered. I'm good with it.
Mr. Signor?
I'm okay, Jack.
That's what I like to hear. Mr. Calder?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, uh. At this time, uh I need a motion to for the waiver of site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we approve the uh the waiver.
I'll second it, Jack.
Motion made by Mr. Yule, seconded by Mr. Signor. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. Okay, uh, but Mr. Timber, you found out any information for the?
Well, I did not get in touch with her, but I did leave her a message with the phone number and the access ID, and it appears that there is someone on the line now with a phone number ending with five nine four, which is also the last three digits of her phone number. Uh, so uh Ms. Flower, if if you can hear us, if you push, uh, I believe it's star six, you can unmute yourself. Um, and you'd be able to answer questions of the board.
But you're still muted.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a just an observation here? A year or two ago, I think it was two years ago, maybe three years ago, we approved a vegetable stand right on uh Duane'sburg Road, right near Petey Brothers. I think.
Right across the cemetery.
Right, and he put a a stone pad down. He had his uh building there and he did sales, but at the end of the season, he just closed the building up and you know, he's gone out of business since then and the building's gone. So I I think this is a little a little unfair to have her move in a ten by eighteen shed. I agree with Mr. Calder. That would be a a tremendous uh burden to for a hundred and twenty days, you know? So I that's just my opinion.
I agree with you, Mr. Yule.
Who is that? I mean, uh, stupid. I mean, it's not blocking the view of traffic or oncoming cars or anything like that, right?
No, it's kind of no.
It's a as I as I understood the plan, it's alongside her driveway in her yard, so that's what it looks like to me.
Alright, so there's no traffic hazard.
And we are talking Curry Bush Road, which is not super busy either.
Yeah, it's the dead end section of Curry Bush Road. It's old Curry Bush Road.
Is there any way we can take that out of that? Out of this uh agenda?
It's my it's my opinion that you don't need to impose that condition. This is you can you can approve the seasonal sales permit, in my view, without requiring her to remove the accessory structure once the one hundred and twenty days is up. What it would amount to would be she's got to stop doing the seasonal sales at the at the end of the hundred day, one hundred and twenty day period. If she continues, she's in violation, but if she doesn't continue, but the shed still happens to be there. Um, you know, if you don't impose that condition, then she'd be fine.
Can she get another permit if she wants to go more than a hundred and twenty days?
Uh, she would have to do it. I believe Peter may correct me, but I believe you're entitled to do up to a hundred and twenty days in each calendar year. So she could do it next year, for instance. So she could do a hundred and twenty days this year, a hundred and twenty days next year. Because it's a seasonal sales permit. It's not a um, like a permanent use.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is give her we'll make a motion for the seasonal sale permit uh without these without the removal of the of the structure. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, so it would be a a motion to approve the waiver with the modification that number five be deleted. Uh, well, actually, the second sentence of number five being deleted. So that's what the board intends to do. So if somebody wants to make that motion, just say, I'll make the motion and and we'll record it properly.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Del Sandro. On the vote, please.
Mr. Yule?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
Yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, motion carried. That was nice. Okay, we get back to where we're at here. Standard agenda, we're at uh Paul and Michael Gordon LLC, thirty fifty nine, thirty seventy five Broadway. Sketch site plan in construction to construct a nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy seven square foot commercial building on consolidated two point seven five acres engineer A P D engineering. Tim Tim Shag, the A P D engineer, is here to give us an update of the proposal. If I got that right, Mr. Shag, am I saying that right? I don't know if he hears me. He's muted. Hello? Anybody from uh Gordon?
Can you hear me?
No, I can hear you. Yes, I can.
You're okay, okay, good. Uh, I was clicking the wrong button. My bad.
Okay, well, uh, what are you doing here? Give us a good rundown as what what we're looking at.
Sure, let me uh let me share my screen here. So you can see the updated site plan.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you to do that.
Okay. Um. I assume everyone can see this, right?
Mm hmm. Yep.
Okay. So, good evening and thank you again for your time. Uh, again, my name is Tim Shag. I'm a civil engineer with A P D Engineering and Architecture. Uh, we're back before you tonight to present the revised site layout and the architectural elevations for the proposed Aldi store at thirty seventy five Broadway. Uh, after our last meeting, one of the things we took away was that it was important to look for a way to provide a means of access from Kenmore Avenue to accommodate residential neighborhood to the north. So this plant here full size. Um, it's kind of the what what we've come up with. Uh, one of the things we're doing is we're laying this out. We're also coordinating with the traffic consultant to address areas of concerns that they had uh in dealing with the DOT. So a couple of the changes that came apart from the previous site plan, um in the lower corner here where the number nine is, uh, before you may recall, we had a ingress egress exit there out to Princeton Road. And we've taken that away. Um, we also in front of the Subway Restaurant had a an exclusive driveway for Subway. We've also eliminated that. We've now made that kind of a conjoined driveway access here for both Subway and the small office building to the to the right there. So really tried to trim down the number of access points onto Broadway and Princeton Roads. Uh, to really just out of the signalized intersection that we had before. Uh, we are now showing public sidewalk along the entire project frontage along the DOT right away. And then also a public sidewalk that leads from that right away up to the store entrance. Um, out the back of the store here, you can see we do show now a twenty four foot drive aisle leading out to Kenmore Avenue as well as a five foot pedestrian sidewalk to run parallel to that for ease of access. Um. In addition to those changes, we have also added in two additional parking spaces. Uh, we did this, we we went through the zoning code and you'll see the site data table here down in the bottom right corner. Uh, we went through the zoning code, determined that we needed one hundred and ten spaces uh for the zoning codes, so we made sure we had the hundred and ten. So we wouldn't need a variance. Uh, that one hundred and ten includes both Aldi and Subway, both businesses. Uh, in general, we went through the entire zoning code, looked at all the different setback requirements, uh, parking spot or parking space dimensions, all that stuff to make sure that the site plan was in conformance. So they wouldn't need any variances uh based on the zoning code. We also coordinated with the planning office on the um zoning itself, the B two zoning and the allowable limits of the thirty foot zoning encroachment to make sure that the building was falling within that zone. But so that shifted the building forward a little bit, a little bit away from the residential area uh to accomplish that. Um, in addition to the site changes, we also got direction from the Aldi corporate office that they wanted to go with a uh before we had shown a what they called a version seven E R um floor print. They want to switch that order to a version seven two dual tower uh building. So the interior square footage of the store um goes down from nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty five square feet to nineteen thousand three hundred and one square feet. So addition a difference of a hundred and fifty four square feet less. So really not that much of a difference. Um, and then if we look at the elevation of the building, um if I just go from top to bottom here, the side elevation number four, that's going to be the elevation that faces towards the businesses to the west. Uh, I'll jump down to number two, which is the front elevation. That's going to face towards Broadway and Princeton Roads. The side elevation number three here, uh, there's great here, the railing, that's going to be up against the loading dock, so that'll face the access road. Now that goes out to Kenmore and then the rear elevation would be the back of the building. And that in a nutshell is is the changes that we went through and uh incorporated within the site plan. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to glad to field those.
Is that the only one loading dock or uh only one truck in there at a time, I'm trying to say, right?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay.
And and that's pretty much standard for all the Aldi stores. They really the way they organize their shipments of deliveries coming in, they all just need a single truck.
Right, and they most of the time they're doing their delivery at night, probably after the store is closed?
Yeah, they'll uh the delivery trucks run through the night. They kind of come in. Uh, I think I mentioned before, it's uh you can see there's a access door here at the back. Um, the delivery driver will pull in. He'll actually get out of the get out of the truck, go in the back there, unload everything into the store, jumps back in his truck and leaves. And then come morning time, the staff comes in and they and they restock the shelves.
Right, and the and the I know the little question will be asked, but I'm gonna the the road coming into the back, the trucks are not going to be using that road coming in from Kenmore, I I would believe, right?
Correct, yeah, the traffic turning movements we've done are all coming off of Broadway. Um, like I said before, come up in front here and then back around the store. We haven't even run the truck tubs coming off of Kenmore, but my suspicion is that this turn here kind of coming around the loading dock is going to be too tight for them to make that.
Hmm.
Um, and so like, so I so I would anticipate everything's going to come off of Broadway.
Well, off of Broadway and then back in, okay. Okay, let me open this up to the planning board and see if they have any questions. Could you take your diagram down, please?
Yes, well, let's see here. There we go.
Okay, well, I asked a couple of questions that we were concerned with before about the trucks backing in, and we were interested in that road in from Kenmore and the sidewalk. So uh, any uh let me go to the rest of the guys on the planning board, rest of the people on the planning board. See if they have any questions. Uh, Mr. Calder? Wayne?
Uh, no, I don't really have any questions. I think everything's explained. Um. Uh, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Collins?
Well, my only question is, I see you're gonna put a wood fence up in that vinyl. Um, I'd like to see vinyl if possible. I know it's more expensive, but in the long run you get more bang for your dollar because it doesn't um deteriorate as much as wood does up in the northeast, but when it comes to different colors and shades that might blend in with your store, but that's just a suggestion. It's here nor there. That's my only comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Del Sandro?
Yeah, I've got a couple, Jack. Um, where's the where's the Aldi's dumpster located? I see the subway one, but I don't see one for Aldi's.
Right in that drawing. Did you see it at the drawing?
It's over by the.
Yes.
By that road coming.
Is this in the loading dock area?
Yeah. Okay. Alright, the the other thing is I'm worried about that back entrance. You know, I walk back there um a lot down down Kenmore, and I'm pretty sure there's like a daycare right in the corner of Cox and Kenmore. I mean, you get a lot of traffic. That's get you're dumping right out or, you know, either exiting or entering right into a residential neighborhood. I really don't my opinion, I don't think that's a very good idea. Uh, but that's just my opinion. Um, that's about all the questions I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, by the way, Mark, that's been there even when C V S was there.
I know.
Same, it's the same. Nothing's really changed, but you know, other than it's a different store.
Yeah, but you're gonna have a lot more traffic with this with a market. Especially being the only one on this side of town.
Yeah, that's possible. That's for sure. Uh, Mr. Yule? Any questions, any comments?
Yeah, I've got a comment about it. I wish you had left the plan up. Can you put your plan back up? I'd like to see the demolition sheet. Sheet C one?
Sure.
You can show Mark where that dumpster is while you got this one up. Okay, there you go.
There we go.
No, C one, the demolition. Right there.
Yes.
Okay. Now. Yeah, I just want this for clarification. Is it my understanding that every place there is hash marks? Those those diagonal lines, everything uh under those diagonal lines is going to be removed?
That is correct. Yeah, so essentially, it's almost the entire site.
Right, you're gonna take up all the pavement? And any?
Yes.
Trees and stuff. I noticed in the back along the the house there, you stay ten feet away from the property line and the one bush in the back on Kenmore you left on the left hand side. Is that correct?
Yeah, the intent would be the the three bushes or trees along Kenmore Avenue would remain. And then the vegetation along the residences on either side, we leave that in place, too. We really would just want to take out the pavement that's out there.
Okay, now that's my question. You've got a twenty four foot wide road running through there under your site plan. So either side of that road now is not going to have pavement. So I know there was a concern about parking trucks back there and people spinning their cars around in the snow back there. So there won't be a parking lot back there is what I'm what I'm going for.
Correct, yeah, we'll we'll actually tear up all the asphalt and then they'll put in the new road. So then either side of that would just be landscaping.
Okay, be grass or, you know, okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure that that's what it was and we're gonna have a pavement back there. And you can show Mr. Delisandro where that where that dumpster is, because it took me a while to find it.
It's right there.
Yep, so.
Oh, okay.
You can see it there. Says right there, and then there's a gate in front of it, a screen gate.
Okay.
Is that a compactor type of dumpster? Or just a dumpster?
No, I think they do have a compactor in the store itself, but that's just a just a regular trash.
Okay, alright, alright. I just wanted to make sure. Um, and let me see if I have a couple of other questions here. I I want to comment on you sending these plans. They were much easier to read, the larger plans and uh the new sidewalk along coming in from Kenmore along that along the edge of the road and the sidewalk along the front of the property also. And it goes right from uh uh Lucius to go all the way down to uh to the subway. So you've got a brand new uh concrete sidewalk there that will connect, and you get a lot of people walking along that edge of the road and then the concrete sidewalk that goes in. So I uh I think that's a plus. And uh, you know, they the signalized uh entrance at the at the front of the store will help to let people in and out also. So I'm not sure the volume of traffic going out the back, it may not be as much as uh Mr. Delisandro thought it would be. Uh, it depends on the volume in the store. But like like Mr. uh Denny said, that store has been like that for sixty years and they've had that, and it was just one wide open uh curb cut in the back. It was, you know, the whole the whole width of the parking lot was a curb cut. You could come in from any angle and go from any angle. So the the road will contain people, slow them down, get to the end, they'll have to stop. And the uh the daycare that I know is on the corner, uh the I believe the kids are self-contained and they're they're not running out in the street. I never see anybody there. They're they've got it all fenced in, so and that's their responsibility, running that business. But other than that, I think you guys did a great job on this. And uh, it looks good to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Mr. Signor, I think you're the only person I asked.
Um, yeah, I just um you know, I feel obligated. Uh, I mean, I had some residents express concern about the Kenmore Avenue uh uh entrance and uh or exit, entrance and exit. So I feel obligated to ask this question. And how often is uh are these trucks gonna exit onto Kenmore Avenue?
They're not, Joe. I I asked him that. He said they weren't gonna use it. The trucks are gonna.
Yeah, the trucks, the trucks won't use Kenmore for entrance or exit.
Okay. Okay, now, in the event that uh a driver's unaware, that can there be signage?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that. I mean, I if I'm looking at the site plan, a truck parked in that loading dock, there's virtually no way for them to go out through Kenmore. They they could never make that U-turn, if that makes sense. Um, but yeah, I I don't see a problem with adding signage or or some kind of uh something maybe in the employee room, staff in the room that let the truckers know not to go that way.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm I'm expressing, uh, you know, concerns of the residents that that live in the area, and I feel an obligation of that. But, you know, I'm confident uh in what you're telling us, uh, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh Fred Mastriani is our engineer on this project. Fred, you got any comments for us for us on this?
Yes, uh, can everybody hear me? Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, great. Yeah, I I attended the last month's meeting and I heard some of the comments from the planning board, and I see that they've uh uh addressed some of those and we right now, we, you know, we received the concept plan, so we're going to be reviewing it from a zoning standpoint initially. And I should have a draft comment letter to Peter regarding that. Also, we discussed with the engineer um about access that that he mentioned about trying to restrict the amount of access along the uh Broadway and that in that area, that intersection, they did, I think, generally speaking, they did a good job with that. Um, they did send us a traffic impact assessment uh today, so we're gonna be reviewing that. And uh wanting any comments regarding that. Um, so we have, we just really just got started, but we should by the end of next week, I'm hoping to have uh uh comments regarding the traffic impact assessment and uh and so forth. So so far, I think they've been seemed to be addressing our our concerns. The only one question I have is the sidewalk along um the frontage and it correct me if I'm wrong, but it does appear to be on private property. Am I correct in that?
Yes, I believe that is correct. Yes. Yes, I believe that is correct. Yes.
So, uh, obviously, we wanted to make it accessible to the public, so we may want to think about how we want to do that. Potentially, uh, one, one possibility would be uh, providing a permanent easement, uh, so the public does have access to those sidewalks. Uh, uh, obviously, they still have access whether we, whether they're in public right away or not, but we just want to make sure that, uh, legally, they could, they could use that. So I just, but, uh, you know, we'll provide some additional comments as things go on, and, uh, we'll be coordinating with DOT, obviously, and the, and the town, and, uh, so far, so good, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Mastriani, thank you very much. At this time, this is not a public hearing, but is anyone, uh, would like to have comments or have something to say about our, our Aldi's project? You're welcome to it.
Mr. D, Mr. Denny?
Yes.
My name is Lyndon. Hi, I'm, am I allowed to make a comment or discuss?
Well, I'll give you three minutes to make a comment. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I was the one who sent the email to the town of Rotterdam, uh, town supervisor and town board members because of our proximity of our property to the Aldi's. And what we were concerned about is the location of the fence to our property. Will we be able to get into the back of our garage if we should have to do some siding? Um, I find that most of the questions that I had in my email have been addressed. Um, the one thing I was concerned about was all the telephone poles that are in that back parking lot. Will they be taking those down? Lowering the lighting, um, because right now it's like being, uh, not national grid lighting.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that they're gonna, they're gonna put their own lighting in those, those light, lightnings are coming down, I believe.
Okay, all right, that was a concern. Um, I, I don't know if you got a chance, I ta, did talk to Peter and he did have my email. I don't know if he ever sent it to everyone. But, you know, uh, I'm, I'm not opposed to the Aldi, as long as I know that they're, um, they're, the roadway that they're talking about, is it gonna be big enough for two cars one-way? Um, it's not gonna impact me as much it is as the neighbors that are more on the Cox Avenue side because, uh, of the traffic going in and out. And those kids in the daycare centers, they do play in the street. They have a basketball, uh, pole, but, um, you know, it's, uh,
Yeah, well, number one, I don't believe that roadways is built for two, uh, wide enough for, uh, two-way traffic coming around. That's, that's very obvious. And far as the daycare center with the kids back there, uh, again, there's been businesses there for the last 30 years or longer, and cars have been coming in and out of that parking lot for many, many years. And the owners of the daycare should be aware of the traffic that will be going through there from day to day. So I'm, I'm sure that they'll take, take care to make sure nothing goes on there.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. But as I said, um, the neighborhood is definitely changed. Um, we knew when the CVS was there and it was quite open, there was a lot of people who would cut through just to avoid the five corners, the lights.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's just a concern. Whether people will use it to, um, go to the market or not, I really don't know walkers. Um, I don't know.
All right, well, actually, if you look at the drawing, uh, it's not gonna be, uh, very good for a cut, cut-through to avoid the traffic because there's no exit on Princeton Road. That's where a lot of people used to do, go through there and come on on Princeton Road. The exit is right at the light. So if you, if you try to miss the light, you cut through that back road, you end up getting the light on Broadway. So I don't believe they're gonna be using that for a cutout, a cut-through either. So I think we got all your problems solved. We're working hard at it.
Having been there, uh, almost 50 years, I've seen it all, seen it all.
I'm sure you understand what's going on. Sure. Okay, there's no action.
You know, I just want, I know that, I just want to be sure that how my property is going to be impacted, because it does make a decision of what we're going to do in the future and, uh, resale value. So we're looking at that too.
Okay. Okay, at this time, there is no action on this.
Okay.
So we're gonna move on to the next on the agenda. Next thing on the agenda is BT Land Development LLC, 1222 1266 Duane'sburg Road. Sketch site plan to special use permit reviews to install diesel service state center and redevelopment existing buildings, traditional builders' buildings into commercial spaces on a combined 4.6-acre parcel. Engineering insight, northeast, northeast engineers and land surveying. Uh, I know if you guys, the rest of the members on the board, you, I think you're familiar with the area we're talking about because right across from it, where Mike Giorgio is, is building that new complex. And I guess, uh, they're looking to do some, uh, diesel, diesel fuel pump stations across the street. So at this time, I'm gonna turn this over to their engineer or developer. Mr. Romeo, is that you?
That is me. Uh, good evening, Mr. Denny. Thank you very much for the introduction. Um, is it okay if I share my screen at this time?
Yes, and then you, yes, that, I'd like to have you, uh, yeah, put it up there and tell the guys what you're doing.
All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
I'm gonna expand it for everybody. All right, so thank you, uh, members of the board this evening. This project is at 1266 Duane'sburg Road. It is right across the street from Becker Road, and we are just down the road on Duane'sburg from Exit 25 off of I-88 and the I-90 interchange. This project is perfect for this area, located directly off of the exit in, in, uh, B2 zone. We are proposing four diesel service stations, so four diesel truck, um, gas stations with queue on the property for this. And this is really important because on Duane'sburg Road right now, for the existing Pilot Center that is next door, they, they can't service the trucks fast enough, you know, because the trucks are coming in anyway off of I-88 and they're queuing on Duane'sburg Road. So with this project, we're hoping to alleviate all that congestion on Duane'sburg Road and to make money in the process. Uh, as part of this, uh, you know, with our pre-application discuss, discussion with Mr. Comenzos, we showed some turning radii on the site, um, for our initial concept plan. We are looking to complete a final survey here shortly, and we'll be submitting updated plans with obviously full engineering design. But for this evening, we have this concept plan which shows the site itself. Couple notable items on the, the site. We are showing currently 33 parking spaces. The bare minimum for this site is 25 based on the roughly 6,000, or just over 6,000 square foot, uh, building. We are looking to take down an existing building, uh, on the neighboring property and combine these two properties. With that, the existing pizza place that is here would move into the building, and we'd be looking to have a variety of different tenants, you know, food vendors, uh, you know, office space. Basically, whatever, it, it could be built to suit whatever, uh, you know, requires. Uh, water will be coming from municipal system and wastewater will be held with an onsite septic system. There is an existing onsite septic system. We are looking to see if that is sufficient for our needs. We, as part of this, we have eight, right now, eight, uh, full-size truck parking spaces. Again, this is additional queue. Uh, in this, we may be looking to try to add one or two more parking spaces as well as try to maximize, uh, the parking space for the building itself. Even if we don't build them now, we'd love to try to bank extra spaces in case, you know, they're needed. We're, we, we obviously hope that this will draw people in here, so that way the businesses, you know, with the traffic that's already on Duane'sburg Road, already driving, driving through this area, coming off the exit, go in here, hit the pizza place or any other restaurant that might, might be here, and, you know, alleviate the traffic on Duane'sburg Road and obviously help out all the long-haul truckers that are coming through the area. Now, a couple other things with the site. There are two small wetland areas on the site. Uh, we're looking to try to leave one alone as much as possible. The other one is right in the middle of the property, as you can see in this area, and we'd be impacting, uh, a small portion of this. We obviously would be working with the Army Corps of Engineers. This is an Army Corps of Engineers wetland area. So we'd be working with them to obtain a permit to disturb this area. But either way, we're, we're looking at pretty minimal disturbances in the, the neighborhood of 3, 3,000 to 3,500 square foot of disturbance with that. So we do not believe any mitigation will be required. There are a couple drainage, there's a drainage swell that comes off of I-88 down the side of the property. We are not looking to impact that at all. All water, stormwater will be maintained on-site, likely at the rear of the property or throughout the property at various practices. Um, disturbance will be over one acre. Um, so we understand we will be providing a SWIP for the project. With that, we are looking at this as a redevelopment project because there are existing businesses on here. There's existing parking lots and existing roads, so we would be redeveloping those. The big question, I think that I, I wanted to make sure that I address, is the curb cuts. This property is unique in that it has two curb cuts already because there are two properties that are being combined. And what's excellent about it is that the curb cuts are pretty much in the perfect spots. So while we do have to coordinate with the state DOT to tie into the roadway itself, we're not expecting too much pushback on that, other than that we'd be widening the curb cut slightly just to accommodate the updated New York State DOT standards and make sure that we have turning radiuses that can accommodate all of the trucks. As part of this project, we will obviously proposing site lighting and landscaping to suit, so the, the site looks great, you know, from the road. And, uh, you know, we'll have a sign out front as well, um, just to direct everybody to where they need to go. The two lanes, um, the, the right turn in, you know, and the, the turn in rather from Duane'sburg Road will be a one-way only, you know, to, again, alleviate any potential congestion in there. The second entrance, um, further to the west will be both a right in, uh, or a, an in and an out, um, you know, and then it will be transitioned to one-way. And this is just to service, you know, people are coming in here to, to go to the existing pizza place or to one of the other potential, um, restaurants or facilities in here, they would have access to that easily. Couple other last notable items. We do not anticipate any archaeological problems with this site. We do not anticipate any other environmental issues with this site. Um, and again, because it's an existing building, the, the renovations inside are minimal. We're not looking to put up any other uh, storage space on the site at this time. It's just what you see on this concept plan. Um, at this point, I'd like to turn it back over to the board and see if there's any questions that you may have that hopefully you can answer tonight. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that'd be good. You take your map down, your drawing down for me, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, right off the bat, uh, myself being the chairman, I, I see you're, you got trucks, trucks going in there getting fuel. And just by your drawings I'm looking at, you got fuel trucks at the pump station, trucks behind the pump station, and they're gonna be backing up like crazy. You're gonna have a lot of trucks in that area, not a lot, a lot of room for a lot of trucks. And even if they go around the building and go out the exit road, uh, with the amount of trucks that'd be going in there, you don't have parking for, what, only seven trucks?
Eight trucks.
Eight trucks, yeah.
Yes.
There could be a problem. I like, well, I'm myself, I think there, it looks like there may be a problem with the the motion with all those trucks going in that little area. But let me see what the rest of the plan board, planning board has questions about. Uh, even, even the building being where it is, uh, cross traffic, people trying to get in to order a pizza or whatever might be in there. It might be quite confusing. Uh, okay, uh, Mr. Yule, I know you might have a question about this.
Well, I, I agree with you, Mr. Mr. Chairman. Uh, the, the site looks good on paper, but the first four lanes going in are sitting at gas pumps, and I don't know how long it takes to pump 100 gallons of diesel or whatever they take. But you could tie up those four lanes for a half an hour to an hour, and now that's gonna back up the trucks going out. And I, I see what you were referring to. There is a bypass lane, but the bypass lane just goes around. Um, I think this is, is it, it's too tight a site. I'm looking at the site next door to the left, which could have been a better site for this. You, you need quite a few acres to do what you're gonna do and and only being able to store eight trucks. I mean, how much business are you gonna generate from, from eight trucks? And I don't know what the, what the markup is on diesel, how much you make on a gallon of diesel, but I, I always heard the gas business wasn't too good. And I also agree with you, having a retail business in there trying to back out and get out when there's trucks going in and out and trucks backed up, who knows what you're gonna run into. It, just look at the mess next door in the, in the Pilot, which has a lot more parking spaces, and they have a disaster over there. They can't handle what they have. And this would, this would take the overflow, and then it would just be backed up even further. I, I just don't see it happening on this site. I, I don't, you know, I, I don't know how you can do both of those together without a large parking area to accommodate the trucks like they have next door at Pilot, and they can't even accommodate themselves. Um, I, I assume we're gonna have a TDE on this project, and I'd wait for their concerns. But I also thought there was a lot more wetlands behind this project in the back, like where the trucks were parked, but I never saw it, but it, somebody told me that there, you know, the back of these properties are all wetlands and how well the septic systems are gonna function, because I, I know there's a high-water table out there, so that would also be another issue. So, uh, we'll, we'll go, and it's a concept at this point. We'll see where we go from there, and if the engineer looks at it and gives us some suggestions, you know, we'll go from there. But that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Del Sandro.
I agree with, with both Mr. Danny and Mr. Yule. Yeah, that's, you got a bottleneck right, right going into the project. Um, yeah, there's definitely a need for parking out there and diesel fuel, but, I mean, this, it seems very tight. I would, I would both agree with Mr. Denny and Mr. Yule on this. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I agree with him, and I, I go out there quite a bit because I work part-time out there, but a lot of them are days, you, cars can't even get into, um, Pilot because the trucks are backed up, and I think that they would have a real hard time in this one, but we'll see where it goes, but I got some, some concerns. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I know that they're a little, I, I believe there's gonna be a turning lane out there too on Route 7. It has to be put in. Uh, so I don't know if that's gonna cause a problem with this, with this new, uh, new businesses, but we'll have to see. Mr. Signor, uh, what do you think? Any, any questions or comments?
Uh, well, it sounds like the other members have covered it pretty much, and we'll have to see what our TDE, uh, what information he gives us.
Okay. Mr. Calder, Wayne, Mr. Calder, you have any questions or comments?
Um, I work right next door to that property. I'm very familiar with that piece of
I see you do, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, uh, they're really crunching a lot of, a lot of things into that narrow spot. I know it's deep, but it's very narrow. And, uh, I don't see how with the retail businesses in there, anybody get, I don't know how you're gonna get in and out of there, even to park your car and walk in and pick up whatever you're gonna pick up to go with.
Yeah.
Um, but that's gonna be a tough project. It really is. It's a good thing it's beginning because, uh, if it was, if it was standing just like it is now and we were up for a final, I, I wouldn't like it at all. But, uh, that's my feeling. It's early, so we'll have to see.
Yes, it's early. Okay, at this point, uh, Mr. Comenzos, uh, I'm gonna ask for, uh, permission to hire a TDE on this project. Is this too soon? Peter?
Uh, no, you can do that if you'd like. And this was just presented this evening as a concept, um, a concept sketch, so, um, if the board, so, so choose to do that, if, if you would want to have a TDE look at this before they advanced it any further, um, you could go ahead and, uh, request a motion to, uh, to get a TDE on board to help review the project.
I, I, I'm, I think by pulling the board, I think you'll agree with me that I think we should at least do that. Have a TD look at this before you get too much further into it. So I'm asking, asking a motion, do you make permission to hire a TDE?
I'll make that motion.
By Mr. Collins, seconded by Mr. Signor. On the favor.
Mr. Yule?
Uh, yes, assuming that the developer wants to go ahead with the project.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Del Sandro?
Yes.
Mr. Calder?
I agree with Mr. Yule. The developer may decide after listening to us tonight that he doesn't wanna, he maybe wants to change things around a little bit. It may be a little bit early, but I, I, I can understand the need for it. I, I say yes.
Mr. Signor?
Yes.
Chairman Denny?
Yes, the motion carried, so we'll, we'll have to look at it further and see what, what, uh, what develops. Talk to our TD and see what, what we might be going after here.
Miss, Mr. Chairman, may I, uh, just quickly walk through a couple of points of clarification?
Sure, go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. All right, so one thing I wanted to stress, if I didn't make this very clear, the truck entrance, uh, to the site is going to be a dedicated truck entrance. We will not be encouraging passenger cars to go into this. That's why we have that secondary entrance. Primarily, that secondary entrance will be used for the retail spaces. The truck entrance will be used solely for, you know, the service center itself. Um, I don't anticipate too many trucks backing out of the fueling station. You know, we have queue lanes here, uh, obviously. People are queuing right now on Duane'sburg Road on Route 7. Obviously, to pull in and back into the spaces for the, the, the truck spaces, they will not have to, to deal with any passenger cars in that area because no passenger cars will be going through this area. Um, basically, by Basically, by where the turn is, by the parking spaces at the northwest corner, there will be a one-way sign. No cars will be allowed in that area, so that that's a one-way area. Um, so as far as congestion through there, you know, obviously, we're encouraging trucks to to stop and grab food. You know, eight spaces right now is what the current concept has. I'd like to try to fit in another four, if we can, along basically parallel type parking lanes down that side. But we have to wait for the survey to see where that detroit is. And obviously, we'll make some adjustments to the site plan to take all of your concerns into account. Um, but personally, you know, when we're and professionally, when we're going through this, I don't foresee that congestion issues. And I I look forward to working with the TDE with this. I don't see the the congestion issues that that all of you are seeing. With this, granted, you know, obviously, you you all are very familiar with the site. That's great. But by preventing the passenger cars from going into the truck area, we we alleviate a lot of those concerns, in my eyes at least, with that. And as far as other wetlands, we will be looking to update the, you know, the delineation report, so that way we can get our Army Corps permit. But this was delineated recently, within the last two years, and these are the the wetlands as they stood then. Thank you.
Okay. I get your point, too, but you I even even telling me that the trucks can't use or the cars are not gonna be able to use that that entrance. It's still gonna, the trucks are gonna be, they're gonna be at that pump, fueling their trucks up. And it's full of, every pump is occupied, and the truck, second truck behind him is occupied. The third truck, he's right at the entrance, so that's gonna cause a lot of congestion at that at that point in time. But again, we'll we'll see what we're gonna do, possibly a TD to look at it further, and we'll go from there. There's no actual, no action action tonight on this, by the way, so.
Yes.
We're at that point in time. Okay, Mr. Tingler, you have anything that you'd like to? You're off, you're you're.
Nope, I have I have nothing to 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 raise at all.
Okay.
Pardon?
Okay, I guess, that's it. There's no action. This is not a public hearing, so we can, we can adjourn this meeting if you guys are ready.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Collins, seconded by Mr. Delisandro. We don't think we have to vote for that. I'm sure we all want to. Dana, we're we're done with our meeting, so could you take care of that for us?